Welcome to our regular meeting of council in person and live stream electronically Tuesday, February fourth. A reminder of Montague's Winter Fest Thursday, February sixth, Friday, February seventh, and Saturday, February eighth. Check out our website for all the activities. And a reminder that the committee of the whole meeting is canceled. There was no items. So our land acknowledgement is the council and staff of the township of Montague. Acknowledge that this sacred land on which the township of Montague is now located and this meeting is being held. Is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anshabi Nation. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. To move a council agenda dated February fourth, twenty twenty five, be approved as amended to include item three G and three eight. All in favor? Carrie. Score of interest now at any point in time during the meeting. Move by Councilor Bass, second by Deputy Reeve Carroll, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated January twenty first, twenty twenty five. And the special meeting of council dated January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five be approved as presented. All in favor? Carrie. Any business arising from our previous meetings? We have no delegations or deputations. Our first is a report of municipal officers, our fire chief Miles Greer on open air burning bylaw.
Okay, thank you very much, Reeve Jennings, council. So before you tonight, we've brought a report for action and it's in regards to our open air burning bylaw. As you are aware, we trans- we're transitioning into the who's responding for our burn permits now. We'd like to have that come into effect in the March and then transition as quickly as possible, hoping by July or August that we have most of our community transitioned into the online program. I think the program's a great program because it gives them, you know, more diversity where if they wanted to have it on a Sunday, they can just, you know, dial the number or on the website to activate their permit. So it gives them a lot more freedom of when they want to burn and whatnot. So what we've done with our bylaw is we've kind of amended it a little bit just to to come in compliance with the new who's responding. You'll notice on page sixteen, it's the word activate is the definition of activate and how they would activate it. Pretty minor changes. We've also added in on page seventeen. We've never really had any bylaws for fireworks. So we added in, you know, a meaning for fireworks and also a meaning for flying lanterns. We've added both of them into our bylaw. So when it comes to fireworks, it's no person shall set fireworks off on property that is not privately owned by them, and this includes township roadways and allowances. In the past couple of years, I have had a few complaints about fireworks being set off on, you know, side roads and stuff like that, and they're wondering if it's legal. So I wanted to make it straight clear there that it's not legal to set them off on our property. So that's page nineteen. When we go down a little bit further, we get into no person shall set off page twenty two fireworks when there's a fire ban in place. We have had that in the past also, so I wanted to make it real clear. And no person shall use flying lanterns at any time. That's a something that came down probably ten years ago with these flying lanterns and they've been a nuisance to every community around us and I think every bylaw pretty much reads the same. No flying lanterns in the community. There's so much risk in setting other people's property on fire, houses, and it's happened. Unfortunately, it has happened. Where they've sent a person's house on fire because of a flying lantern. So we just wanted to nip that before it gets too far. Basically, that's all the changes we're looking at this evening, and I'm certainly open to any questions on the open air bylaw. Or if you wanted to add anything to it, I'm certainly open for questions.
Comment, because I did read where it's just updating to bring it in line with others, as you've said, other surrounding municipalities.
Other surrounding municipalities. We looked at three or four that's actually in Larnar County and, you know, so we did pick at some of theirs to get some of, you know, the better verbiage that we could use to really clarify things on this.
So do you still have to come in to the office for the original permit or can you do that online?
So that's a very good question. So there's a couple of options you can do. You can do it right online. If you phone, we can give you the website. It'll be posted on our township website, our Facebook pages, how you can do it. If you're having any trouble at all, myself and Grace, the assistant, you can come in at any time and wait during our business hours. We can hook you up and get you set up online, show you how it works. And we're also going to have probably, we haven't really set a date on it yet. I think it might be around the May area. Please don't quote me on the date. We're gonna go to Rosedale Hall and have an open house where people, the community can come down there and we'll sign yous up, you know, bring your device if you want to be signed up under. The program's really good because for the younger community, they're all online and know what they're doing, but for the older ones, there is a telephone number that you can call and you don't have to have a computer. So I know it's gonna be a bit challenging for our residents because, you know, we're going from one thing to another, but I think at the end of the day, it's so much nicer for them to use and whatnot.
And Chair, just in addition to that, so Miles, you're also gonna see in the tax insert, there's gonna be a little contest for anybody who signs up prior to, I think it was the first week of August, we decided that wins some township swag. So we're gonna kind of give a little bit of incentive to get signed up and get on the program to enter even for a chance to win some township swag.
Just a bit of an initiative, you know, to get people signed up. And we're gonna, we're really gonna monitor our first session at Rosedale Hall. And if there is a good turnout, we certainly will have a second session, you know. If we have a poor turnout, well, we might not have a second. That's where it stands right now.
Grace is also really good at the online tutorials.
Great idea. Great idea. We can have a chat with her. She can do it online tutorial.
Click on it, just follow along.
Yeah, follow this. Yeah, exactly. Great idea. Yep.
I like, I like the updates. I think it's good. I think the renewing of every year, is that like, just like a, like click a button to renew? Is that, like, what's it?
Yeah, I think when you get into the program, if you say you've activated it this year and you have it, next year is just renew. You know, as long as you're adding us and all that, same doesn't change very easily process.
It's very easy. It doesn't have to be like before the my date of, like if I missed a date, then I gotta refill it back in. It's just sort of like.
No, no, if you don't plan on burning until June and you want to redo it June of twenty twenty six.
I can hit renew and does it come to you to, is it like when I hit renew, does it come to you for approval first or does it say, no, it's already approved? No problem because you already had it in the past.
It's automatically approved. And even when you sign up initially for the first goal, it's automatically approved. We have, when you went to it, you'll see where I agree to. So we've really lined it out there, you know. You agree to it, you check it off. We had a couple, you know, thoughts that we might, something may happen in some of them, but we put it in that they have to agree to it, you know, on that. So I don't think we're gonna first see any issues. Again, most of the municipalities around us are using this program now and working, not flawlessly, but working fairly good.
Nothing's, yeah, I like the idea. So I guess one of the things, because I think also like just the completeness of people, everything else. So it's also like, I didn't come to tutorial, I didn't go to that, but that was Saturday and I'm like, oh, I want a fire tonight. Oh, wait. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta do this. I can do that. Still on that Saturday, I could, I could do the permit. Submit it, everything else, and then, and then do whatever like that, and I could still have my fire even though I was complacent and I didn't do it.
You could do it that night and it takes about, we've done it a few times, just at trials, like five minutes to sign up for it.
That's okay. That makes it easy then. So there's no sort of like complication where it's like, oh, I want Saturday, I gotta wait till Monday to get the application or something. It's a little bit faster than we did in the past.
That's the whole thing about this, you know, a lot of people have company drop in on a Saturday night and, you know, can we have a campfire? Well, I gotta call the magistrate. Now they can, they can just go on, sign on and boom.
Thanks, Miles. That's great. Yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
One more, maybe stupid question. So is this going to be an apartment now for all fires of any size or, because I remember at one point, I think it was less than
Yep, thirty by thirty inches.
You didn't, you didn't need to?
Yeah, so you still need a permit. At the start of the year, you still need to apply for a permit. But if you're having a campfire, which we define as thirty inches by thirty inches, you don't need to activate your permit for a campfire.
So it's if you're doing any control burns?
Doing a control burn, a brush pile, something like that is when you have to activate.
I just wanted to clarify that just in case, if they're just watching, it's changing, so they know what they need and how often they need it.
And the, the great part about this too is that when a burn ban's in effect, anybody that signed up, I'll have either their phone number, their email. We really push on emails and I can put right on the who's responding and ask texts, is a burn ban in effect? Goes right to their phones, so you know they're aware that there's a burn ban, because not everybody are aware.
Yeah.
One more stupid question.
No, not stupid.
They, they, these are the point they, they systems, correct?
Correct.
So every time somebody uses a fire permit, they use several warrants, correct?
Credits.
Or credits. So, so what I guess the point is, is just to say those people are doing just a a twenty nine or thirty inch fire, don't need to use it, and that would save records. And I'm only saying that just because it would make it faster longer for, for a normal bonfire.
And you're absolutely right, and that's why we can tailor it to that, you know. If we had everybody had a campfire, you know, doing that, your credits would not last very long. It would be very costly. But because we can tailor it to our own needs, that we can take the campfires out. These credits are gonna last the municipality quite a few years and whatnot.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Yeah, good job.
To move by councillor Crabtree and second by councillor Johnson, that council approved the draft open air burn bylaw as presented this date. All in favor? Carrie, thanks, Miles. Our next report is from our administrator, Tracer Allison Veraken on council and citizen members appointed by council reorganization.
Yep, thank you, Chair. So this is just to go along with the budget that was approved, that the two percent COLA on council reorganization and also the board members. So the board members, based on the policy around seniors, five dollars, so they didn't receive any increase in twenty twenty four, but then the two percent in twenty twenty four plus then the two percent in twenty twenty five results in a five dollar change. So we've made that adjustment for the committee members and we're just looking to approve the bylaw. So everything is appropriate to the budget that was passed.
So moved by Deputy Reeve Carroll and second by councillor Bass, that council accepts the report presented on this date as information. And that council approves the bylaw presented this date to confirm the changes in reorganization for the council members and the citizen members. All in favor? Next is our administrator, Tracer Allison Veraken on seniors active living center of Montague Township.
Thank you, Chair. So as council recalls, we were successful in the application that we made in twenty twenty four for the twenty it was supposed to be effective that we got some funds for January to March of twenty twenty five. But I think they're a little bit late getting this out. We still will get seventy five hundred dollars once we submit our twenty five, twenty six budget for, for those three months. Plus then the funds that we would get for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six year. We have a number of things already booked and planned. So I'm just asking, because on an annual basis, we have to do a budget and then do a final report. So I have to get our budget in for next week for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. So I'm just looking for a resolution of council to say, yes, we are still committing to in lieu contributions and the cash contributions that you had previously provided a resolution for, for our application. So that everybody's on the same page so that this can get up and moving and do some more great things for the community.
To move by councillor Johnson and second by councillor Crabtree, that council provides movement of in lieu contributions of ten thousand dollars and a minimum of in cash contributions of five thousand for the senior active learning centers program for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six year. All in favor? That's Carrie. I'm here. Next is our clerk junior planner, Kristen Cote, on request to rescind neighbor's dog designation.
Good evening, council. So the current animal control bylaw allows landowners to appear before council to confirm, rescind, or amend the conditions that were imposed regarding a designation of dangerous or vicious dogs. At our last meeting of council, we did have a delegation, Andrew and Megan Stoll appeared to request that council reconsider their dog Charlie's dangerous dog designation and the conditions that were imposed. Their dogs trainer also attended to speak in support of this request. The report that you have before you is staff's recommendation that perhaps council consider delegating their authority with regard to the reconsideration of in rescindment or amendment or confirmation of the conditions to the township's bylaw enforcement officer. And if council is agree, agreeable to this delegation of authority, then staff would bring back an amended animal control bylaw that would clarify the process.
If anyone has any questions?
I, I think it's a great idea to put it in someone's hand that they can actually physically see and use their good judgment as opposed to us just in, in the background. So I think this is a wonderful idea and a lot more just in, in favor for everyone.
So is there an ability for the council to be the sober second thought or anything like that? Like, does it totally go to the bylaw officer? Final decision that's done, council can't do anything about it? Or can council bring something forward?
So currently, the way the bylaw is written is that's what it is set up as, is that the bylaw enforcement officer makes that designation and then if the appeal is to council.
Yeah.
What we're saying is that either council has the appeal and it stays the way it is now, because that, that is currently how it works. Or we delegate the authority over to bylaw enforcement officer to be that appeal. So basically, they would make that decision based on documents from a trainer, documents from so council may want to set in the bylaw, you may want to set what would be required to rescind that, right? That you guys are saying, okay, if you have a behavior specialist for dogs and it's check that box and check this box and check this box. That it would be removed from the designation. But I think it's hard for council to make the decision when they're not through, like you're not involved in the whole incident and you're getting one side of the story that's coming and appealing to you. There's other changes to the animal control bylaw that are also gonna be coming forward that we're working on with bylaw enforcement as well. So really, it's up to council, but I think that either way, whatever decision you make, I think that there needs to be a clear set out to be removed. For an animal's designation to be removed, you have to meet this, this, and this. So it's very obvious to everybody and it's not one person being treated differently than another. It's a checklist. And if you don't meet all those checks, the designation does not get removed. I think it needs to be clear as far as, because obviously, everybody doesn't think their dog is dangerous or vicious, or it could be put into a situation where maybe it's a one-off, right? And I think that all of that needs to be taken into account that maybe one of the checks boxes is that it's only occurred once, right? And then it's only, so I think that maybe council can set those priorities. Unless you want to be fully responsible for making the designation and removing the designation.
No, that, that's not really what I'm, I'm asking is you always have staff make all of their decisions, but there's always that final step that council can either intervene or not intervene. And is there still an ability with this bylaw that would come to council? And I'm just gonna use the example of what happened on Johnlin. And it's a one-time thing. So they say about that dog, but it's a dangerous dog. Now, would we then be saying that the bylaw officer makes those final decisions, does the appeal, and there is no recourse within council or the elected officials to act?
So in some instances like that, we end up in the courts.
Yeah.
Right? So that's ultimately where you're probably gonna end up no matter what, because if you make a decision that they don't agree with, we're going to the courts. Same as with bylaw. So I think it's just, it's ultimately up to council. If you want to keep that, that I would recommend just keeping the bylaw the way it is now, because it's ultimately, they appeal to council, council makes that decision. But I think you need to have a checkbox because you, you get one person appealing. So I think you need to have a checkbox of what that animal needs to meet or, and or take training to be able to make the call.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I understand that enough. Because the ultimate thing is going to court.
Absolutely. That's always their option. That's always their option.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that there, we had still those steps that go past that.
Yeah, so they always have the ability that if they don't agree with our designation, go into the courts, right?
So it's their designation's bylaw, whether it's us, they're gonna go to court anyway. Okay, that's fine. And of course, no rule that happens.
Yeah. The court makes the decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I agree that the bylaw officer should be handling the situation, because not too many of us, you know, that much about it. Should be up to him and, and as you were saying, the rules set down, that's it.
So that I'm gonna ask just because do you agree that there should be some kind of checklist? Because we have had that discussion with the municipal bylaw enforcement officer to make it clear to anybody that these are the things that we're looking for to be able to remove that designation. Because we do realize that sometimes it is a one-off or sometimes, you know, something happens or it's just like people, dogs can be rehabilitated. So I, I think it would be a good change to the bylaw to at least miss some of those things.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I agree. I have to come with that. I think it needs to be quite detailed back.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and then is it put in the, the, the bylaw? And the next step would be to go to the courts? Is that like a?
We don't say that. That's just, that, that's our option.
That's just, it's just a given, no matter what. Like, so they would go to like a small claim court or the provincial, the provincial offenses court and they basically say like, this is, this is our bylaw, right? This is our charge.
But normally though, there's provincial offenses act for any kind of dog stuff as well, like dog by dog law, all those things. So they get charged through provincial offenses, you pay your fees through provincial offenses, you don't come in here. So they always have the ability to argue that and fight that.
So that's a bad, that would be like that sober second thought. So like I said, like, so even if, because they go back, because I mean, if I know that that was me and I go back, I'm going back to the same person that charged me. So like, now I feel like, I feel like I'm getting my, my, my just cause. Like, here is your next step that is going to do that just cause. Like, it's better, it's better the courts than us, because we don't know anything about that stuff. I agree with that. That's not like, and, and I don't even want to say if we said, we don't, we deem that dog no longer dangerous and the next week they bite again, is that put us into another category altogether? So like, I have no interest in making that call. So that needs to go to the courts.
Yeah, I agree.
I think bylaw is gonna do a better job of then that dog looks rehabilitated, has, has that, like you said, that, that actually eyes on, on, on the problem. Then there will be, we can from this position.
No, I agree. Yeah. I just want to make sure that they have a recourse passed on.
Yeah, so just keep in mind though, that whenever this bylaw comes back, there's gonna be a couple of other changes too, okay? It'll be laid out, but just because it's been in council, I directed that whenever we made the update from twenty years or how old the bylaw was, that we bring it back within twelve months, but with the passing of our previous bylaw enforcement officer, we pushed back a bit, where we have advised some of the public members that were very involved in, in that. And they know that we're working on it and there's gonna be some, a couple of other tweaks and changes along with that as well.
So move by councillor Bass and second by Deputy Reeve Carroll, that council delegate their authority to confirm, amend, rescind the conditions imposed regarding the dangerous dog designation assigned to Charlie owned by Andrew and Megan Stoll to the township's bylaw enforcement officer. And further, that council direct staff to bring forth the revised animal control bylaw to authorize the township's bylaw enforcement officer to confirm, amend, rescind the conditions imposed under a dangerous dog or vicious dog order. All in favor? The next one is clerk junior planner, Kristen Cote, on Better Homes Larnar Program.
Okay. In November of twenty twenty three, staff brought a report to council looking for support for the County of Larnar's funding application to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities that would allow ratepayers to apply for low interest financing and grants for energy improving retro fitting. The county was successful in their application and the next step in this process is for the participating lower tier municipalities and the county to pass bylaws that would adopt the local improvement charge. And the draft bylaw, which includes a copy of the property owner agreement that would have to be entered into in order to obtain financing and or grants, is attached to the report. There also attached to the report is a copy of the slide deck for the presentation that went to county council, I believe it was last week. It is a pretty comprehensive document, so if anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
So Chair, through you. So I just have one and it came up during our discussions is that the initial cost is six hundred dollars upfront to have an energy audit done to even be entered into this program. The county had not accounted for them to, for the people who so for the folks that are truly gonna benefit from this, they may not, six hundred dollars is a lot of money to have upfront. So we had that discussion, but they hadn't accounted for that in year one of being able to potentially absorb that cost. So it does get refunded to the individuals if they're successful. But until that time, they have to come up with six hundred dollars upfront just to have the energy audit completed. So we had discussions amongst the group, and I know a lot of other municipalities felt the same way, that the six hundred dollars may be a deterrent for people to enter into the program and even get the audit done. So our kind of discussion for you folks is that we do have some donation money. We also have some social service reserves. And we've spoke with the county and said, if, if our township decides to come up with, maybe it's ten people that we say that come forward, that can prove that financially they need the assistance, the county will make that call, they would, if they're on any of the county's social programming and things like that, that we would pay the upfront six hundred dollar energy costs and the county would reimburse us upon them becoming successful. So it's just a discussion point for council on whether you're interested in that or not. I just, I personally feel like the six hundred dollars may deter some folks from actually being able to take part in this. And I don't think that that's the purpose of, of this whole program. And I think that we should still set a requirement though, if, if you guys do decide to do that, that we're gonna take tens, we're not looking at sixty thousand dollars, we're looking at, you know, and that they have to be able, so whenever they apply to the county, the county would be able to say to us, yes, they meet the requirements of the income or whatever the requirements are. And so then we would pay the six hundred dollars upfront and then upon successful completion, that six hundred dollars would come back to us. It's just a thought, because I do feel like six hundred dollars in this economic times is a lot of money upfront for something you may or may not be successful in. So just a thought process for you guys. Go ahead.
I, I think that's great. But my first question would be, does the staff at our level see any holes in the plan? And I think there's a, there's a, there's one of the holes in the plan that could be very beneficial. And if, we, we're still protected because if you just go back and tax law is ever an issue or something doesn't happen, all that kind of stuff, right, as far as, so.
Yeah, it could, but I think if you limit your number to ten, we're talking about six thousand dollars. We have some social services reserves that I feel like this is the type of thing they're kind of for, right? So if, in the event that they're not successful, then, you know, that might just come out of there. But again, if you set that number that it's like, okay, Montague has ten spaces for people that require this, then the county knows that and we can work together with the county, because we had that discussion with them and they said, yeah, they'll do a form that the resident would basically sign saying the township is, is paying for it. In the event they're successful, the county is paying directly back to the township the six hundred dollars, not to the recipient. Because that's the only like major flaw that I can see that just might deter what this program is for. Because it's a lot, it's a lot upfront.
There was discussion by one of the other smaller municipalities as well last week. There was discussion by one of the other smaller municipalities as well last week.
Yeah, yeah, so, um. We wanna make sure that it's accessible, um. Uh, from that perspective, but again, it's entirely up to council, but like I said, we do have a thirty thousand dollars in our social services reserves, so. To say six thousand, we may be getting it back, right? Um, and we may not get ten people even apply that meet, that meet that requirement. But just that if there is someone, um, that can really benefit from that, I don't want that to be the determining factor, and I don't think. You guys do either, but.
No, it gotta make sense, but. Make it, make sure that it's equitable, people get to it, so it's, uh, and that's the whole, yeah, if we can fill that stuff, so. And like you said, you may not get anybody, you may get two people that look for it. But at least if that option is there, and when you can get one person, that one person is able to do it, and then make that renovation. I mean, then then at least we're, at least we did the right thing there, so I think that's, uh, I think it's the right call.
I mean, you're great, and you guys have kind of thought this through and have thresholds and say, okay, if these thresholds are not, that, you know, we might be able to. Assist you in this way, and and like you said, six hundred dollars is.
A lot of fun.
It's a lot of fun, if you don't have the six hundred, so, but I I think this is a a great opportunity. How about where where we can, you know?
Well, if you still have a guardrail to protect yourself, it's, I mean, ten, six thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, and there's those thresholds to meet too, that you're you're saying, you know, like, whatever they they deem a a good threshold, and. And I think that's that's awesome, that we're, you know, trying to give back in our way to work.
Would it be, sorry, I I guess I wanted to, we said we'd only ten, we, almost like ten at a time too, like, because if somebody does it. And then they, and then we get refunded, and it's like, oh, we're back up to ten again, right?
Yeah, we can do that. And we have six thousand dollars in the pot, and it's a revolving, so if we have three people come forward, they get their energy audits, they meet the requirements, they get into the program, we. Get funded back, now we have two, right? Like, um, so we can, we can make it a revolving door.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Great idea, yeah, perfect, yeah, because it's good, they're replenishing it every time, so why don't you just keep going?
Well, that's how the, even this this program kind of works, because it's a grant fund that came, and and that money, so I guess it's paid out, but then once comes back in, that means the money can go back out again. So like, it's like, it's supposed to be that revolving door, so that's the same thing.
That's great.
Great, awesome, true.
Okay, so, um.
When are you gonna change the list then?
I think we might bring it back to you guys of what we're looking at for us, um, and where it will be funded, just so it's all in the documents. Yeah, but just, we just wanted to kind of bring that forward to you, just to. Um, have that discussion, um, to make sure that every, it's accessible really to more people. Yeah.
So move accounts are craft tree, and second by council Johnson, that council authorized the county of manor. To provide notice of a bylaw to adopt a local improvement charge residential retrofit program on behalf of the township. And the council directs staff to bring forth the bylaw to adopt a local improvement charge bylaw for the February eighteen, twenty twenty five council meeting. As per the draft bylaw presented this age, all in favor? That's very, thank you.
Good one, Erica.
Thank you.
Next is our administrator treasurer. Last and break, and I'm filling the administrator treasurer position.
Thank you, Chair, so, um. As council will recall, um, so I I'll be completed with the township on March tenth. Um, so there are the job descriptions attached, uh, for council discussion. I have spoken to the Reeve and advise that. Um, in the event that you don't have the treasurer position filled, I can continue to assist in the in the background and keep. Making everything, um, run, uh, until. That time, um. But that's entirely up to you guys, uh, in relation to that, but I think that it's important to get the, um, administrator or CEO or. Township manager or whatever you would like to call it. Job description out, I also think that it's important for you guys to potentially put the grants on several job. Of the job descriptions to make sure that there's a number of people looking and eyes out for those types of things. Um, and then really, it's what you guys are looking for in the position, but I know that the Reva sent over a town manager job description, and it was pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Um. To kind of encompass. Not just an administrator, but like, I don't know, i- it was a good encompassing of of the role.
Cause the word administrator gets confusing to some of the ones out in the the public sector that they seem to think it's, yeah. And they're applying when they definitely don't have the criteria that's required because of the title, so. Smaller than a C O, but town manager, township manager would definitely reflect.
Or municipal manager or something.
Something, yes, municipal manager, so, but yeah, and then. Um. My in the left field thoughts were that, because we're not sure. As to who's actually out there looking for work for a smaller municipality. My thought was that, let's put out whatever different. Job description, we think we might attract people, that we might be able to then. Work for, so. Uh, historically, we've had the clerk, uh, clerk administrator, we had a treasurer, then we went to clerk administrator treasurer, then it was. Um.
Administrator.
Administrator treasurer, so, uh, we have clerk, so if we look at. Uh, municipal manager, we look at a treasurer, we still look at the treasurer administrator. We can still look at a deputy clerk, deputy treasurer, and just, just to see what's. Out there to try and see who applies to how we could get some positions filled.
And I think with that, um, municipal's different than private, so we all want each other to be successful as well, so even if you get somebody that. Maybe hasn't done budget or year end, but has some finance, I'm happy to. Like, work with that person too, and kind of, like, if it's to do the first budget or first year out with them, that's okay too. Like, we want people to grow and to be in the industry, because it seems to be getting harder and harder with, um. With kind of the republic sometimes, so, um, I'm happy to do that as well, depending on who you get, you might get somebody that's a fully, you know. Can just walk in and and go, um, but if not. I wouldn't wanna see somebody, um. That could potentially, that has just made those two things they haven't done, because you're you're a relatively small municipality, it's a good one to come in and learn that from, yeah.
Not sure too, um, one of the other thoughts I was thinking about was that, I mean. The job descriptions going out, but but sorry, the ads going out, you know, looking for a full time thirty five hour work week. But whether we would entertain too. The option for somebody who is retired and only looking for part time, for example. If that's something that we can include in the ad to open up the option to get more applicants as well, so.
Yeah, in that thing, um, a lot of, uh, not just retired people, but, uh. Younger people want that type of work life balance. And they would like to work two, three days a week, so I think casting a wide net. With those kind of parameters within it, if you wanna work thirty five hours a week, we'll negotiate that with you, but I think if you have in there that it's. I don't know how you work.
Twenty to thirty five.
Yeah. Flexible.
A range.
Yeah, do something like that, then we can entertain, so I think there are a lot of people out there who have a great skill set, but. They have different things going on in their life, but they would be great to have for. Two, three days, whatever it turns out to be, I don't wanna lose people that might help us out a ton.
Yeah.
And and if we're too strict with what we're doing, because I know when we've, uh. At Saint Patrick's Home, when we've tried to get people involved in hiring and that kind of stuff. That's the very first thing that all of our younger board members talk about, is you have to have a flexible job description. If you don't, then look at it, well, it's only thirty five, and they just cross it off their list, but if you have something where it's a range. They'll come and at least come and talk to you about it, and maybe it works out. But it's just, I I hate to cut off the sake, because it's not just retired people, we have a lot of younger people, but that's how they operate.
Not that I'm applying, but the retired is why I, is that went that way.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I retired twice.
But it was just something, it was just trying.
Would that be for, like. Oh, and I'm just out of concretion, so that, I I don't do all of this thing, um. The, would that be more for somebody who's doing like backend stuff, like treasurer work, where they're not really working? With the public, or sort of like part of the job?
Well, that's what, sorry, um, that's the way I would look, I would, I would have it in all of them, and then when I see who applies. Then I would start my negotiation on how I wanted to fit each person into those slots. So it's, I'm not quite sure about the township manager one, that might be more of a, you're here thirty five hours a week. But the other ones, you might be able to plug and play, you know, and even with, even with the township manager one too. Depending on who you get, and who your lead hand is, and you have miles, you have people like that that know what they're doing. Maybe you don't need somebody five days, you know, so I'm just saying that if you keep the flexibility, then we have the ability to plug and play. So how do you figure it then to pay for that? If you have somebody working three days a week and. Seven, five, there's, it's, that's ratios that you can figure out.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I just, because you certainly don't wanna be paying. Yeah, when you're, or you're an hourly person, you can easily, or quickly, not easily, quickly figure out. So yeah, no, it's an awesome question, because that's the thing, it's also a great way to pay less than what you're doing, especially in the small township, so. Fiscally responsible too.
So I guess for us, um. For this one, um. Is council going to kind of leave it to the Reeve and I to? Like, the treasurer job description, I think that there's, like, I think that grants should be added to it, I think it should be on both of their job descriptions, and if you're putting out for. It should be on theirs too, um, it should just be on all, that all eyes are on grants, and they work collaboratively together, whatever the case is. I just think it should be there, so that they know. Um, other than that, I don't know that there's a lot that needs to change, you can put flexible hours on it as a host of a thirty five hour week, and. See what you get back, um, it's more the town manager position, and again, making sure that it kind of has some of the. Not pigeonholing yourself so much that you're looking for this particular skill set and this particular person, that it's really. Wide range on what you're looking for, um. So far, sorry.
It's still live, everyone, we're just.
Yeah. Oh, it's not a retention.
Sorry, she's dead air, right?
Cause what happens is when I was trying to send it, I don't think it's sent under.
No, so key responsibilities for strategic leadership and administration would be provide overall leadership interaction to municipal operations. Act as the primary advisory council, providing research, analysis, and recommendations on policies, bylaws, and initiatives. Uh, so from the clerking perspective, I think that you would potentially be looking at it from a deputy clerk, that they can fill in if the clerk. I- is not here, so maintaining official records, understanding, um, agendas, minutes, that kind of thing. Uh, assisting with municipal elections, which are coming up next year. Um, planning, development, and marketing, so leading the planning and development task force, support residential and business growths, kind of that active, um. From that, financial oversight, so they develop and administer the annual municipal budget in collaboration with the treasurer, so normally. Your C O or your municipal manager always has kind of final say before the budget goes to council. Monitor expenditures, revenues, and funding opportunities to maintain fiscal responsibilities, so that oversight over the treasurer. Ensure accurate financial reporting and compliance, so they normally do sign off on, um, the treasury functions, to make sure there's a second set of eyes. Modernization of the organization, so obviously attracting, recruiting, um. There's lots of other areas that can be updated to be more efficient and effective. Uh, building relationships and partnerships, so continuing on with acting as the liaison and fostering the strong relationships. Continuing on with the school, the school boards, the seniors, all those groups, um. So qualification and experience, so looking for this particular one was a degree in public admin, business admin or related field. Or equivalent experience, which I think is always open. Minimum of five years of senior leadership. And and proven capability of utilizing modern technologies to enhance a customer. Service. It seemed really fitting, to be honest, to kind of, um, look to what you guys are are looking for and really just, um.
I ran that class.
But it's been. So I think even asking for five years, most municipalities in that position build for ten, um, so I think even going to the five, like you are opening up the door. Um, to some that maybe have been in a a manager role and are looking to grow.
Right, it's, it's well, it's well worded, it 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 does cover, uh, on a basis, uh. May- maybe this might want a little bit tweaking on your own, but it it sounds pretty good.
Yes, sort of an outline.
But the, the, yeah, it's a great headline for sure, I mean, but are we, that that position itself? Are we in need of of that position, or we we combining it with something else, like, like, would that be clerk to do as well? Like.
Yes.
That's, that's the biggest thing about that, is that, is is there a full time position for just the, the, like, just that aspect? Or is there other job titles that you can kind of hook to that, like?
So it depends on what council all puts on this person, so if you're gonna continue to try and save money from not hiring consultants on doing like strat plans and all that, yes, there's absolutely enough work there. Um, to do all of that in house, right? As opposed to subbing it all out. Um, you have to keep in mind that this person's gonna have the building, they're gonna have all kinds of things that are currently on the go, they're gonna have to jump in quickly and get moving, so. Um, I have a whole whiteboard full of just this position, not the treasury position. So you have to keep in mind that they're gonna be busy, plus an election will be next year, so that's a whole transition, you have, like. For the first two years, um, depending on who you get, it's going to be busy enough on its own. Um, and then really, it's up to council to make sure that you set those priorities on an annual basis of what you're looking for. And they're gonna be looking after, right, like, developing the twenty. Takeers and coming up with those plans and and sitting down and saying, okay, these are the things we should apply for, these are the things that, and really, it wouldn't hurt to have maybe. Couple extra hours a week to be able to put into more grant applications, because I definitely didn't apply to every grant I would have liked to apply to, because. It's been at the time, so if you think about being able to apply for that many more than what I did. Um, hopefully, you'll you'll get twice as many.
And as a smaller municipality, we one hundred percent rely, we rely, we rely on grants, because if we don't get grants, it means. More taxes to pay for the stuff that we either want and or need.
And that person then potentially funds themselves, right? Like, so, um. That's kind of a good way, that if you have enough time, that person can can do those and. Um, focus on the water sewer agreement, focus on like all of these items, and really, you have enough in the in the fire right now, so. Um, but just if somebody can focus on grants, and like I said, do twice as much as what I did, um. You're, they're paying for themselves.
I ideally, I think if we can find out, and call whatever title you want, uh, uh, a manager, a chief administrator. Give her whatever title you want, um, but somebody to basically run the. The show, then you have someone that's good on the accounting portion, I I think we would be in. Good shape, we 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 had an amazing person doing both jobs, and and, yeah, we were very lucky. Um, but but realistically, we do know it's two roles. And and if they're, if they're, they can both, like you said, have a little bit of grants. Opportunity, if if they can put that in their day to day life and. And have that be part of their, I think we'd be in great shape if we could fill those two positions. They are both pretty important roles and. And 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 we we hope that we can, there's someone out there that has the skill set to be able to pull on these and. You know, be our shoulders to lean on, because we rely on this.
So I think job description is definitely broad enough.
Yeah.
Um, would we add the flexibility thing in there, just so that we can get a taste of what people are looking for?
So for hours, we wouldn't put thirty five, it would just be flexible hours, it would just be flexible hours, so you could have that discussion.
Yeah, cause, cause I think then that plays a little bit to what Jeff's talking about, in the first year or so. You know, there's tons and tons of things to do, and if you're making money back, I'm always very happy with that, and it sort of protects us too, that in two years' time. Things change, we have still that flexibility, so, because it's a range of what we're doing, and so we have the same thing when we go to the treasurer and that.
And Chair through you, I personally think the treasury position here is only a part time position, um, so. I think that if you have that flexibility, that if maybe you have somebody that's only looking for three days a week. Um, if they're, like, if, especially if they're coming from municipal and they know, because we're small, right, so, um. I personally think it's a part time, but it depends on who you're getting, if it's somebody that's gonna be new to the position. They may need the thirty five hours a week, but they're gonna be at the lower end of your pay grade, right? So, but if you have somebody who's qualified and is maybe looking for, they don't wanna retire yet, or. Or even a young person that only wants three days a week, because maybe they're doing something else, then you potentially have the flexibility to accommodate them as well.
Yeah, so I'm trying to think of how could we be efficient as a small municipality, but also the re- remuneration stays within our budget, or. We have surplus, we're, I almost have to imagine, but I just wanna make sure that we are. We see those as the two pillars that we're looking at.
Yeah, I think that, and depending on. Yeah, I think that and depending on, like, there's so many options, um but. With it being a part time, you could always look at, depending on if you don't get a lot of applications, you could always look to your neighboring municipality to say, okay, so why don't we bring in. Um, somebody that's doing taxes and payroll and things like that, and we share a treasurer. Or we share, right, or we have somebody that can just do by the year end kind of thing, so I think there's a lot of components, but I I recommend you put it out to see what you get. You might get somebody phenomenal um that, you know, walks in and just does a great job, so. Um, I still think you should put it out, you can put flexible hours on it, but.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanna make sure that we're sort of, because we are small, we have a fixed amount of money that we can spend on things. And I just wanna make sure that we get the biggest bang.
You talk about wide net too as well, are we talking about also multiple different job descriptions? To see what else is out there too as well, like are we talking about saying like, you might put out four different ones like that, I I would be. I think the idea of the township manager obviously is a good one. Uh, you put out that sort of idea of the of the part time treasurer side of it, um but what if there's like. Like a great role would be like that treasurer with the administrative role. Uh, and then we're also putting out something else, something else out for deputy de- deputy clerk, deputy treasurer role. That that could fill, cuz once again, it's it's that wide net of like, who are you gonna get if we don't put out that application for that one, you gets and then you don't realize that there's somebody else that comes in for that. Um, so I I I was wondering about like, cuz we're we're talking about widening up, but if we pigeonhole saying this position and this position. But if there's a few other positions in there, there's again, there's other applications that then. We say, hey, that's that that that's the fit for that that could do this or the fit for that person or.
Okay, so you're looking to put out a manager, a treasurer, a manager treasurer?
Yeah.
Because if they have a a deputy below them. To assist, so you're gonna put out a deputy.
So if we get admin treasurer, we're gonna still hire a secondary person, because the issue being.
That's it, yeah.
We we can't we can't overwork.
That's why if you go to the deputy level below, because we don't know who's out there for credentials.
So realistically, we're looking for two positions, just what two positions.
How do you jig it, that's that's really, that's really.
So so that being said, we put out four or five different things, feelers or lack of better job description. Once we get those people putting their name forward, that's when we'll go through, it's okay, well, this would work here, now we can massage those. Applications into what we think it might work, cuz we might have someone can say, well, actually, I know I applied for this, but I could do both those things. So when you have your interviews, that's our opportunity to see, oh, well, if you'd be really good at this and this, would you be interested in that? So that would be a nice way to do it, actually, cuz then we can be nimble about how we're trying to hire. And not sort of pigeonholing people like Jeff was saying, we won't really do that, because in the interview process, we'll be able to glean. Well, you actually have a really good skill set, have you ever thought of this? And see where we go, because I know a lot of times in my past life, we would get people applying for a certain job, but when we're speaking with them is.
So salary is gonna have to be salary to be discussed on those though, because um none of this is scored, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, no, I agree a hundred percent with that. And again, that that shows flexibility in not just hours, but salary, cuz a lot of people wanna have that discussion upfront, that's not like fielded.
So yeah, finding the fit for the the right fit for the people that are gonna fit, once again, in a small municipality and 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 kind of do the jobs that need to get done too as well, so.
I agree with that.
And then the next part is. Are Ally and I working on this or what are you thinking?
What's your background is if not? That sort of stuff.
I I I'm keen for that, like, and obviously, everything comes back and we have these discussions, and we're open, and we're always, and we talk, we always discuss these things. But to make sure that we're good in its in its in its in a timely fashion, I think that's the most efficient way of doing it. I'm 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 very comfortable with the communication that comes back from that, so like.
So then my question to Ally is, do you feel you have the time to do this, cuz that's the part.
Yeah, that's fine, I think that what you've sent, like to put together a draft, um and if council's comfortable with what, like with allowing us to post what we've come up with, I think. Like we said, we had a pretty good deal, we'll let you know anyway, um and then the only other thing is, is that. The hiring committee for a manager CIO position is normally all of council. Um, if you don't want to, that's fine, but normally they would interview with all of council, so council gets an idea of who's running the municipality. Um, and then the treasurer normally you have one or two council members sit on that, or deputy treasurer.
Whatever the past practice, I'm good, whatever you guys have done.
So um is there anybody who's fully interested in on being on the treasurer slash deputy treasurer?
So how long are we posting this?
So I wouldn't put a mandate on it, my recommendation to you is that you post it without end, until filled. Um, so you get probably great applying the first week, call in and interview me. That's just my pre, like, because honestly, currently right now municipal world, if you don't, they might get a job somewhere else, yeah, right? So if if we got a really strong application in, try and bring them in.
And that's what we had moved to in current place, was because exactly, you were losing them before you got the closing done. Scoring the applications, getting them in for an interview, you were losing them, so we started, we were felt like we were going through the interview process. That's we were going through, and it was something I did back in private sector. Cuz it was just inmates ass.
No, if we got somebody that we thought was.
We'd hire him on the slot.
Exactly, right, like why wait three weeks for it to close whenever you know you wanna. So um as long as everybody's fine with that, so then we'll reach out, so um like I said, the 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 top position will be all of you. Um, and then while people are on holidays, you might have to.
Let's discuss that when it comes up, when it comes up and say who's available, who can do it and let's say.
Same as the treasurer, you wanna discuss that later, or or is there one or two people that are interested in sitting?
I'm I am interested in being involved in that, but I I always am too as well, so. But if Gerald or Jim wanna do it, I'm more than happy to.
I I I trust the communication between all of us, and and you know, we all know that finance is the most important part. Um, within the municipality, so so uh I I think there. Uh, has to be a a good amount of respect that we say, okay, if the numbers don't make sense, we we're all screwed, so.
I'm listening, but and you've had some experience in different things like that too, which I know I am.
I'm good reading numbers, um reading of people, I I like who I like and I don't like who I don't like, so.
That's a good way to hear, it's not for the reason and.
No, that's any camera meeting.
What's that?
If if there's three of you, then it's any camera meetings, it's.
No, I I but as another, like, but once again, though, like, is if as a. Like, as anything, like, I just wanna make sure that we have.
Be like, if you wanna do all those things, I'm okay with that too, like, it's.
As long as we have, yeah, but like, as long as we have.
Sure we have another wire and kiss on behalf of. So 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 let's just.
Your vacation, vacation, if something's going on, it's like, okay, well, we don't have these two, well, we have these two. And say, and like all that kind of stuff, right, so. We don't wanna. Hold up anything, exactly, there we go.
Okay, um and are you looking at bringing in a third party to be the like subject matter expert or? Are you looking for me to sit on it?
I I would suggest you as the subject matter uh ma- uh matter expert, seeing as you've done it and everything's running smoothly and. You're gonna be handing it over to them.
As long as you're okay with coming back to help us with something.
Yeah, it's up to you guys what you, and I I won't be offended if you say, no, we wanna get somebody else, that's fine, I'll just leave a list of everything, but.
But let us know if if there's if there's a complication with that, so that obviously. Then we can then we can go there, but obviously your assistance would be.
Like like you said, you've offered, then if the the new treasurer needs help at your end uh to to facilitate that, so. It'd be great for you to be part of that and basically maybe do need you at some point.
Sometimes it's just even a different financial system, that somebody can sit down with you and just show you like even, you know what it's like, um that kind of thing, so.
You can show me how to turn on a computer.
Yeah. Or text message, um okay, so if that's good, then the resolution is that they provide you um. I and me, direction to act um accordingly, so what I have down is that uh we're gonna put out for the four. Throw everything out there and see what we get back, um it's going to be salary to be discussed and hours are going to be flexible.
Yeah, I think I think that covered, yeah, put it out there and see.
And we're gonna put grants on all of the job descriptions.
Much money as I can get, I have.
Okay, all right, okay, that's all we need.
So moved by Deputy Reeve Carroll and second by Councilor Bass. That council accepted the resignation on administrator treasurer. And that council directed Reeve and our administrator to act as directed this date in the way to fill in your position, all in favor, not security.
Can we refuse a resignation?
And next, yeah, next is our administrator treasurer, Allison Brayton on provincial funding, health and safety water stream.
Yeah, no, mine's not working either. The report. I've got this one, what are you doing? Okay, so um the problem is with the with the newly election out there and there's there's all kinds of funding coming forward, so. They put forward um provincial funding for health and safety water streams, so basically the funding is for municipalities who have water systems. Um, that are not solely reliant on receiving funding by increasing housing. So it's to better the systems that are already currently in place, so. Um, the fire chief, water operator, myself, did meet with the town of Smith Falls today, we reached out last week or the week before to meet with them to discuss. Um, the funding, the funding um does score better if you have a joint or collaborative. Um, funding application, so the town is set to redo all of Reno, put in a new trunk and a water lane there. Um, they had applied for previous funding and were unsuccessful in the fourteen million dollar funding, so they're applying to this funding again. Which some of our residents are on the Reno piping and our system doesn't currently tie into all of Reno, but we would like it to. Tie into all Reno, map on the report, we have a lot of dead ends, dead ends in a water system, as Miles will tell you, is not good. Um, we had brought a report forward to council back in September, uh talking about modernizing our system to reduce staff time. Potentially be able to transition the operations of the water over to a third party. So we do have modernization funds as well, but if we can do a joint application and get seventy three percent funded from the province, my recommendation to council is that we do this. So you will see on the mapping uh the dead ends, so some of the dead ends. Uh, with the stars, backs onto the town of Smith Falls property, we're not sure that we have enough municipal property ourselves. To actually loop all of that, those dead ends together with and the piping, and we'd have to get into another area of Smith Falls as far as the underground. But we can put flushing units on the end of them that reduce basically the dead ends, and not only that, it makes it a location. Where uh Miles can test the water as opposed to going into somebody's house, which currently happens. Um, so the blue triangles are the end that are going on to Reno, and that's the main water trunk that Smith Falls is gonna be redoing. Uh, along with the water lines, that we would like to actually remove all those dead ends and tie in. Um, we would need to meter those dead ends because of the usage that we use, it would, they would need to know how much is going through that system. Um, and then the red dot is the location of the analyzing station that we had mentioned to council back in September. So basically, the analyzing station would have the equipment that would do the daily reads and then Miles would only have to do Wednesdays. So he's not tied to water and sewer the way currently is seven days a week. Um, so this would, uh Miles has been in discussions with the Ministry of Environment, um. To make sure that this would work for us, so I think the recommendation for council is that we um try and get an engineered. Class D estimate quickly, within the next couple of weeks, Smith Falls has advised that they'll send um their engineer to us. Because he's finishing up their drawings, so that it is really a collaboration and um. That their engineer, I believe, is working on the grant application too, so we wouldn't have to do some of that, so we'll have some engineering fees. Um, but there's a couple of things here. It's good news for them and it's good news for us, it's gonna make their application stronger for something that they really need to do. And them upgrading their system benefits our residents as well. Um, and then it's going to benefit us in the joint application for us to potentially be able to do this under seventy three percent funding from the province. Um, because we do have a hundred and fifty in modernization funds still that we had told council that we'd like to use to modernize. So this would then potentially reduce or move to an ability for us to have a third party operate the system. In the event that our current operator retired or um moved on, so. I think this is a good, uh the recommendation is to move forward and try and get the modernization and move in the right direction for the system. Reduce those dead ends, give more um locations to the testing where they're not going into people's homes. Um, health and safety of everything is enhanced, if we can do this, to be honest, even if we can't, we have the funds. To go ahead with it, but let's try and get seventy three percent of the province.
I was just thinking too, it's nice to see a partnership between.
Yeah.
Smith Falls and us too, so it's a nice step in the right direction to hopefully do more stuff together. But I mean, I think perfect sense to. How would, why would you turn down a chance to get seventy one percent paid?
Uh, I just wanna kind of explain to you, uh I mean, Ally's done a great job explaining this, but dead ends, how a dead end works. Dead ends, a lot of stagnant water that's not getting used, a lot of water, so when you go to a dead end, you'll get a low chlorine residual. And that's what you don't want in your system, that's where you're gonna get bacteria, that's why getting rid of these dead ends is. The best way to loop is the best way, but if you can't loop, certainly a flusher does that. When you do a flushing, of course, you are taking water from the system, but if this was to go in place, we would calculate. If it flushes for five minutes out of one inch pipe, how much did it use, you know, to do that flushing system? So um, you know, Ally's done a great job and our friends in Smith Falls today were very good to deal with. Uh, I think we had a a very good meeting and hopefully we can work towards, you know, getting a better system up there. Not that it's bad now, everything's good, but you know, just modernize.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Little further questions, Kelly?
So moved by Councilor Johnson and second by Councilor Crabtree, that council approves the use of modernization funds to prepare an engineer drawing cost. For the health and safety water stream joint application that the town of Smith Falls. And that a report on the cost be brought back to council for information, and further, the council directs the Reeve to provide a letter of support. For the application on behalf of Montague Township, all in favor? Next is our administrator treasurer, Allison Brayton on our.
Yeah, and Ontario. Okay, so um I'm trying to kind of wrap up, but they keep bringing out grants. Um, and I don't want Montague to lose out on some of these funding opportunities, so. We had applied back in September to the New Horizon Grant for pickleball courts at the twenty two acre park. Uh, it was for one court, there's currently a sale on um the actual matting that goes down. There's like twelve by twelve tiles that all click together anyways, and it's on sale cuz it's the twenty twenty four color, which happens to be blue and green. So um, I know, I know. So um and based off of kind of rough estimates, uh we were anticipating that the township would be funding some of. Uh, over and above the twenty five thousand, um so based on the amount of popularity of pickleball. Um, and the people that have stopped in here asking if they can rent the fire hall once fire hoops over there to do pickleball. Um, that maybe two courts um would be appropriate and uh. So we can work and try and get some quotes quickly, so that council has an idea of what that looks like in the event that we're successful in this grant application. So twenty five thousand um would be funded from New Horizons and then the balance would be the municipality. Uh, we would have to excavate eighteen inches, we do twelve inch grant B, six inch grant A, through our concrete slab. Um, obviously do some backfilling around that concrete slab, we'd get the matting for the two courts that comes with the nets. And then the chain link fencing with two entrances into the court, um. So as we're talking about this though, Ontario Trillium, so I did provide a little map here too, so you guys can kind of see the pickleball courts. That's not the exact location, but I threw it on the photo, um and it's not true to size. So it would also, it would go beside the vault. So it would also, it would go beside the volleyball, so kind of between the row and the volleyball. Um. To leave that other space for a potential covered uh, building or things like that. With that being said, um, Ontario Trillium has their capital grant open again, I think it's February twelfth. Uh, staff have been discussing potential opportunities for that as well. We know that lighting has been a big request for the volleyball courts and the sliding hill and then pickleball courts. Um, if those are successful. An accessible washroom, so a facility. Um, if we have these things, we will have to put um, potentially a porta potty if if not, but I think that. Uh, an installation of an accessible washroom with water and a septic would not be a bad idea over there um, for potential growth. Um, and then. Ball field has been a really big uh, the school. So we have been working with the school, as you know, because they're doing the story trail and doing all kinds of things. Um, the kids have asked for a ball field because they don't have one. Uh, and then we also have adults asking for it. They said that Smiths Falls is always booked. Um, for those fun leagues. I'm not talking about like a true like lannard ball field with the red clay. I'm talking about a. Uh, not a baseball, a ball field.
Yeah.
Um, so something that is easily maintained, inexpensive to maintain. Um, and but it's a ball field.
I guess that would be a ball field.
Yes, with benches and you know, but it's not, it's not gonna be the red clay. It's not gonna be a full baseball sized. It's gonna be a ball field. Um.
For kids and girls.
Yeah.
Yeah, ball ball and yeah, basically, right? Like, I think, I think the one thing you guys have gotten back from your community is that they want inexpensive recreational items. That's what this is doing. So and the kids are looking for it next door, right? So and and building that and getting that walkway over and across. So. Um, it's entirely up, we're leaving it up to council, obviously for direction. Um. But this is, this is kind of the idea that we had brought forward to you, um, that if we can apply. By, um, I'm hoping to get some time to get quotes, get this sold and get it off. Um, unless you have something else.
No, that's perfect.
That's great. It's low maintenance, low cost. And uh, yeah.
Do we have a an estimate of what it would cost to build the pickleballs? Because we had a twenty-five thousand grand and there's money on top of that, but we're talking about this is like a.
Like ten probably. Oh, yeah, not not like a huge cost. Because right now the flooring is on sale, so we know a portion's gonna be us. I would like to go ahead and get the flooring. Um, because it's substantially less and blue and green is our color anyway. Um, but that's entirely up to council as well.
But I think that's, I think that's a good, that's a good idea. I think it's a, and for that cost, I mean. Even if we're unsuccessful, I think we're gonna, we could probably move forward certain ideas with it too as well. So I think that's a, I mean, pickleball is definitely. I mean. People are always asking for it. I mean, there's still that need for in the wintertime pickleball stuff. I mean, this will, this helps suffice some of the summertime stuff, but it's a uh, but. But yeah, it's it's a, it's a great opportunity for that.
It's inexpensive too. That's what we wanted to do, so.
Yeah, it's very, yeah, it's inexpensive to maintain.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that that's from what we've heard from council and what we heard from the public is they want inexpensive recreation. Um, and that's what we're trying to bring forward. The pickleball courts, the New Horizon is a senior grant, so that is really um, a senior activity that. Um, has really gone a big uptick. So. Hopefully, our senior group may will start a pickleball um, league.
Is there another stream for the for the recreation stuff too as well that was released or or being released or the whole it's still the same stream that's it?
It's still the C C R F.
It's still the same one that we're still waiting for for answers for, right?
Yeah.
It's a uh, after the election sometime.
Probably.
Do you have permission to go ahead and mark stuff? Is that the idea?
I'm look. Looking for permission that you guys are looking, um, that if I have the time to get the quotes and get it off for the O T S.
Yeah.
Um, unless you have something else you'd rather it go towards. But I know lighting is a big, like, we need lighting over there. Um, and you're gonna need a washroom facility of some kind, so it would be nice to have water. And septic, because then if you decided to do an outdoor.
I think we're looking, I think we're looking to be able to use this and utilize this more starting, starting this year.
Yeah.
And and I think this is the the right direction to make it. Usable.
And broadly usable, yes, seniors, kids from the school, everybody there. We want this to be a focus, so. I'm in for doing stuff like that. Thank you.
So, because keeping in mind that the walking trail will still get completed with um. Parkland fees, so that's still to be completed this year, um, things like that, but. Um, so this is in addition to the storytime trail and walking trail, the history board that the school's doing, um. Those kind of things, uh, and then go from there. Because I think so far the sliding hill has been a hit.
Yeah, oh gosh.
So, um, and then again, that free recreational space.
And ref- and the lighting as well, yeah, because of the, I mean, I've seen the parents park the car or the vehicle and have the lights shining. Yeah. And I've seen the kids still sliding down because the lights are on, so it's.
And if you put a rink out there too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. Yep, right.
So moved by councillor Abbas and second by councillor Crabtree, that council approves the use of recreation reserves to purchase the pickleball courts at the twenty-two acre mountain park. If successful in the New Horizon, we need any additional cost to install the courts. And that staff bring back a report to update council on the total cost of the courts if successful. Application and project, project, all things. And further, the council approves that staff applying to the Ontario Trillium grant. And grow the Montague twenty-two acre park by applying for the items discussed this date. All in favor? Not carry. You can't drown me out. You might try.
He was very excited about this.
Uh, so now we're on to our. Of committees. That was our committee full meeting from January twenty-first. So moved by councillor Abbas and second by Deputy Reed Carroll. That council approved the minutes of committee, the whole meeting date of January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and approved the recommendations contained within. All in favor? Not to carry. We have no petitions and on to our bylaws. So moved by councillor Crabtree and second by councillor Johnson, that bylaw four one one six dash twenty twenty-five. Being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with Carolyn. Benoit, the owner of land, municipally known as one oh nine Rio Ave North. Be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and seal this fourth day of February twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Not carried. Moved by Deputy Reed Carroll and second by councillor Abbas, that bylaw four one one seven dash twenty twenty-five. Being a bylaw to appoint an alternate building inspector for the township of Montague. Be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and seal this fourth day of February twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Carry. Moved by councillor Johnson and second by councillor Crabtree, that bylaw four one one eight dash twenty twenty-five. Being a bylaw to regulate the setting and maintaining of open air burning for the corporation of the township of Montague. Be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and seal this fourth day of February twenty twenty-five. All in favor? And that's carried. Moved by councillor Abbas, second by Deputy Reed Carroll, that bylaw four one one nine dash twenty twenty-five. Being a bylaw to appoint members to boards, committees and other statutory positions. Be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and seal this fourth day of February twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Carry. Moved by councillor Crabtree and second by councillor Johnson, that bylaw four one two zero dash twenty twenty-five. Being a bylaw to establish remuneration and expenses for members of council and local boards. Be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and seal. This fourth day of February twenty twenty-five. All in favor? Carry. All right, and now we have no motion, notice of motion. Brought forward. Unfinished business, other business. And now I'll go to the audience. Any questions? Anybody in the audience?
Anybody?
Uh, when you're putting out the, the feelers to fill in those two positions you really have, you're gonna put out four. Job descriptions or whatnot, is that not gonna scare people away because they're thinking. That township must have really been in bad shape. They're looking for everybody. Everybody ran away.
I think we can word the ad to put it. I think in the in the treasure description, I think you, I think you could put it out as a deputy treasurer or a treasurer. That you're potentially looking for somebody who is full qualified or working towards that, maybe, because that's a good point.
Yeah, because I was thinking like, if you put out like four different ads, they're gonna say, oh, the whole staff was left because they're really all on there.
But I think if we can word it, yeah, it's a way that it'll let them know that it's just. With the growing municipality, we're looking at all our options, maybe?
A variety of, a variety of different shoes that can be filled based on two. Questions.
I I think too. This is a small. Subset of people that work in these jobs, and I think they all know what's going on in every municipality. We might get that person who doesn't really, isn't plugged into it, but. My short knowledge of all this kind of stuff is people move around. And they all know where everything is. So I don't know if we'd really scare anybody away, because I think they might know the story of Montague themselves of what's going on. It's. Anyway, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna ask questions. Yeah.
Anybody that's looking outside of our. Need scramble, lannard type thing.
Yeah, people are already attacking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it would be a concern. I I get what you're saying. It is, I I think too that people are gonna ask questions and. People also like choices nowadays. So they sort of like, they would want a cafeteria style job, but they want one that is.
When the wording, uh, due to the um.
Vacancy?
Vacancy of the position of, and we're now looking for these positions, that's gonna help us.
Yeah.
Both people that are interested, I think, are gonna reach out to me and see.
Yeah.
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 That's what I'm kind of hoping, I'm expecting. Do your due diligence.
Yeah, yeah. I've encouraged some people to apply, so I see, yeah.
Any other questions from our audience here? Okay, Tom.
Two. It's a comment, not a question. I'd like to thank Ally for all the help she's done for the township, for the. People of the township, especially the seniors and the senior group, senior citizens. And she's done a wonderful job toward the township and wish her all the best in her future endeavors.
Thanks, Tom. You may not, you may not uh, lose me that quick on this year, so I may become a member this year to help you guys continue on.
That's great.
We have no questions online. Okay, so moved by Deputy Reed Carroll and second by councillor Abbas, that bylaw four one two one dash twenty twenty-five. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its regular meeting held on February fourth, twenty twenty-five. Be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and seal this fourth day of February twenty twenty-five. All in favor? That's carry. Moved by councillor Johnson and second by councillor Crabtree, that council adjourned the regular meeting of council of February fourth, twenty twenty-five. At seven twenty-four P M until February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M or at the call of the chair. All in favor? Carry.
I'll be back. Um, so chair through you, so I won't be at your next meeting space and.